We all set, Brian?
Yeah.
Let's do a roll call.
Steve, you're muted now.
Mr. Witherspoon. Present. Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Ms. Wells? She's acknowledged she is here, Mr. Rowena.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Mr. Rowena?
Here.
Mr. Goldstein?
Here.
And Mr. Schulman?
Here.
You have a quote.
Okay. First order of business is continuation of the public hearing on 2021-17 SP FRAP LLC, 40 Fulham Road. Let me just mention, I know that everybody else here was at that first meeting. I have watched the tape, so I'm familiar with this item. And therefore, at the appropriate time, will be eligible to vote on it. I'm not sure if there are any members of the public here. Typically, the way we handle a public hearing is the applicant will give a presentation during which the members of the commission are free to ask questions. We then open it up to members of the public. And at the end, the applicant has an opportunity to respond to any public comments. We've said this before at all our public hearings, that you get just one bite of the apple. And so if there is anyone here this evening who has already spoken at the last public hearing, you will not be given a second opportunity to speak. However, at the appropriate time, if there are people who have not had an opportunity to speak yet and wish to speak, they will be permitted to speak. And with that, I'll turn it over to Attorney Blank.
Thank you, Chairman Schulman. Adam Blank for the applicant FRAP LLC. We hope to take up only maybe five to 10 minutes of your time, kind of updating you on some things since the last public hearing, and then answering any questions you or the public might have. If I can share my screen, it may take a second to load. Can you hear me still?
We can hear you. The screen hasn't loaded yet.
Yeah, it'll take, it'll just take a second. As it's loading, I'll tell you that the FRAP owns about seven acres, 7.13 acres of land at 40 Fulham in the B resident zone. The proposal is for 40 units of elderly housing. And that's going to be comprised of 14 single-family units and 13 structures of duplex, so 26 duplex units. Can you see that now? Is it sharing?
Yes.
Okay, great. So that's, that's the general layout as you've seen before. And the architecturals, this was the duplex unit. And these are the single-family units, which are very, very similar to what's being built currently at 125 Richards Avenue by the same developer. The property has mostly this large asphalt, abandoned parking lot. This is the Pepperidge Farm, the giant apartment complex in front. The Pepperidge Farm, like office industrial building here, condo complex here, condo complex back here. And there are a few single-family homes that have bought the property along Fulham Road. The, most of this other development around us is much more densely developed than what we are proposing here at Fulham. We have got, I can stop sharing. We've got with you tonight, the full team, Derek Donave on Civil and Environmental, will give you a brief couple of updates. Matt Pop, the landscape architect. Greg Del Rio, the traffic engineer. And I believe Jerry Efron and Clay Fowler, the developers, are here as well. We've got almost all of our sign-offs in. The only sign-offs from departments that we don't yet have are DPW and WPCA. They did give us comments quite some time ago. We responded to the comments and they needed a little more material from us, which has been provided. But they were not able to get us their formal sign-off for your reading tonight, nor have they expressed any concerns to us. And we would ask if, hopefully, if you approve the project, that you just make it a condition that we get their sign-off, as has been your customary practice. Since our last meeting, we have obtained our wetlands approval. And at that public hearing, the city retained Ed Pollak. He reviewed, he was a peer review expert. He reviewed the drainage, the landscaping, the remediation in the wetlands, the creation of the new wetlands, and reviewed the installation of the crossing of the wetlands to access the site from Fulham Road. After that review and site inspection, he concluded at the public hearing, and this is a quote from him, "I feel really good. Every recommendation that I provided in my report has been incorporated into the plan." He had no recommendations that we didn't incorporate into our plan. He expressed absolutely zero concerns about the development and pointed out to the commission that there's no onsite drainage currently and that, that, and that what we're proposing will certainly be an improvement over existing conditions for the wetlands. And that report is part of your zoning file as well. Other updates since we were last here. Initially, the units were proposed to all have basements. Those have been eliminated, other than I believe one unit still has a basement. We continue to look into the feasibility of solar. We're using the same consultant here as is doing the solar at Richards Avenue. And once we get Richards up and operational, which it's, a number of the units are pretty close already, then we hope to be able to use that data to confirm for us what units here solar will be feasible on, and which won't. We're going to do our best to get solar on as many units as we can reasonably do so. At the last public hearing, there was some concern raised from neighbors over screening. I'm not sure that they used the word screening. I think they used the word of just simply of looking at the development from their houses along Fulham. And it was suggested maybe by Mr. Rowena or Cantor or Witherspoon that we possibly look at providing some screening on their property of, of our site. Matt Pop did go out and take a look. He came up with a few different options and has spoken with a couple of those neighbors at this point, but hasn't, we haven't gotten any kind of a definitive plan for those properties from those neighbors. We have increased the buffer, which Matt will talk about in just a second, on our site facing Fulham to give them a buffer. And we have no objection again to the commission imposing as a condition of approval that we continue to work with the neighbors at 39, 41, 43, and 45 Fulham to put some reasonable landscaping screening in to the extent that they consent to it. Because of course, they have to agree to it. It's their property. The we've, we've also moved some of the locations of units. And we got rid of a few surface spaces and then further beefed up the landscaping plan, all with the intent to try to preserve some additional trees as possible. And also to then plant additional trees and add, add an even more dense planting than what was initially proposed. I'm going to take a break for one minute now, or two minutes, and we're going to let Derek.
Could I ask a question, a quick question before you go on?
Yes.
Ed Galen, please.
What elements would make solar panels feasible or not feasible? Like on my house, they're not feasible because there are too many trees. You know, there's not enough sunlight. But it looks like you have pretty good control over the shade, the amount each roof is shaded. What, what else would make it not feasible?
The, so, and I, I can let, if, if Jerry overrules me, he can overrule me. But if, Jerry, do you want to talk, or do you want me to?
Whatever you like.
What, you're that, more of an expert on it than me.
Well, we're becoming an expert now that we have the opportunity to try on Richards Avenue. So first and foremost, the rear elevation of the building, or the roof to the rear, to the extent that those faces face south, those are a no-brainer. In other words, that's very easy to accomplish. So that's certainly units one through eight. And that's certainly units 36 through, 30 through 36, and also unit 40. So those are without question, rear roof facing south, no problem. Where we've gotten into a little bit of a problem at Richards Avenue is the gable ends of these roofs, the peaks of the roof, to get panels on those roofs, the pitch is steeper than what is eight, what, what the current company that we're working with is able to provide. So if we maintain panels only on the rear facing south, which, only on the rear facing side of the building, there's some areas where we get close to a tree canopy to the, I guess that would be to the east and the west. And it, it's yet to be determined how efficient those would be. We went ahead and put them on Richards Avenue anyway, even though there was skepticism as to their, you know, efficiency. So we're going to give that a try. So basically, any rear-facing roof that faces south, we're happy to provide those. There's no question that that's an efficient use. When we get off of the south-facing rear elevation, there's really not enough room on the front elevation. And as I said, the sides have a pitch roof that's a little too steep without getting into some bracket systems that would really look very bad, in my opinion. And this particular company does not have a rack system that will accommodate that pitch.
Do you, do you have the same issue here? Meaning that you have the same pitch on these buildings as you do on Richards?
Yes, sir. That, that's the dilemma, and that's what we're trying to understand and get our solar people to, to, to deal with and see what the, you know, reasonable, realistic solution is.
Yeah, we don't want the tail to wag the dog. But is there any way to change the pitch of the roof to better accommodate so, solar?
It, could it? Sure. But it would change the entire look, and it would not be something that I, I think would detract more from the architectural aspects of the project than, I mean, than imaginable. I mean, it changes the whole look and feel of the whole architectural look of the building, having that gable end facing front. And to change that pitch, to flatten that pitch, means you, you lose headspace in the second floor. So it would absolutely diminish the size of the second floor. And I think it would look pretty bad to flatten that out.
Steve, some, that's an interesting, that's an interesting conundrum and something, I don't know, that I would love if we can just pose to the consult, not for this particular project, but in general, I can never pronounce consultants who are doing the rewrite of like, what alternatives would we have for people who fall into this potential category of where we want it to, where the, you know, we're saying we want solar, but, you know, from an architectural standpoint, it doesn't quite work out. What alternatives, ways of, of meeting those sort of needs could we come up with? In the same way that we have other mechanisms of where, you know, there are requirements, but there's also other options that sort of achieve the similar goals, but in a different way.
Sure, and we can have that conversation with them. But you have to keep in mind, too, a lot of it depends on how you orientate buildings. If they're orientated so they get southern exposure, then they can have the solar as much easier and much more effective. So I think that's, that's something that they need to consider when they lay out their site.
Well, you're right. I think these are conversations that need to happen early in the process before, before a project design is locked in. So there's an opportunity for the developer to seriously consider that.
We, we certainly do consider all passive solar elements. We have an amazing amount of windows in the front and backs of the home. And we put in skylights and sun tunnels, which provide a lot of passive light. And we're also putting some electric car chargers in, in each garage. So, you know, I, I think the spirit of attempting to become as green as, as reasonable, you know, we've certainly made a, a good attempt at it. And listen, we, we put these, the panels on Richards Avenue facing, that would be west, into a huge tree canopy that's very close. And we're, we're trying it, you know, we, we didn't, you know, we didn't try to extricate ourselves from that commitment because we really just don't know how efficient they'll be with that elevation. So we're trying it. If it works and, and after measuring it, we find that they do serve a function, we don't want to just put panels up there that don't, you know, get enough sun to be efficient. If they are efficient enough, and I don't know what that measurement is yet, then, you know, then we would be able to put them to the, where the rear is facing east and west as well.
Well, could you stay in contact with the staff once those Richards Avenue houses are operational and pass on your experience to them?
Yes, that would be my intention. We all, you know, are experimenting a little here. We're going to learn some things. We're going to see what the usage is and what it actually saves on the meter in terms of, you know, the efficiency. So we're, we're happy to learn and, and we're doing that experiment over there. And if it, if it still can be functional facing into a tree canopy, then we'll certainly, you know, provide them. If we come up with some other racking system that won't, where the, the panels really have to sit flush on the roof. If you start, you know, changing the pitch of the panel different from the pitch of the roof, it's going to look like, you know, a helicopter waiting to take off. I just don't think it would be very aesthetically pleasing.
The, the, I just was taking a look at the, one of the site plans that was submitted. And it, it seems like a, a lot of the, like the, the inner units that kind of enter to that, then the southernmost, which looks like they're the duplexes, and then the northernmost units more or less face north-south. I think that, that those, unless I'm just completely misreading this, but it seems like that would work on, if that's the crux of the discussion, where the units on the furthest west and furthest east would face kind of, would not be the optimum location.
Right. Well, again, it's the rear elevation facing south. We have no problem with those. Will definitely work properly. And we can provide the right, there's a certain ratio evidently of how many panels you need and how many square foot of roof at a certain pitch you need in order to reach the efficiency. So we've determined without a doubt that the units that I mentioned with the rear facing south are not an issue. They're not a problem. So the questionable ones would be the ones where the rear does not face south and their proximity to a tree canopy. And, you know, that's just not determinable at this time. As soon as we're able to determine it, we will provide whatever data we receive and will certainly, you know, have the discussion about what, what, you know, what would be a reasonable, you know, solution.
Yes, Stephen, like this is more of just out-there ideas of, you know, we can talk with the rewrite, but imagine if there was some sort of solar farm centrally located that people can buy into that sort of ops them into something of that nature. But anyway, I get what you're saying, Jerry, and appreciate your efforts on this. I think it's going to be really interesting.
Well. Commissioner Cantor, I mean, and I'm, I'm not going to say whether or not it's, I'm not, I'm not sure whether you can do it or not, but, but, but a, a, a easy way of doing it that way would be that, that you can opt to have your electricity supplied 100% from renewable sources.
Yeah.
The other thing we're learning is there are some companies that are very, very close, you know, to getting this technology into the roof shingles themselves so that you could put them in more places in an efficient manner that's aesthetically pleasing. We're very close to that. We're just not quite there yet, so.
Yeah, it's so close, right?
Right.
I think everyone's really excited for that because I know you hear a lot of homeowners balk at the racks as they are. But once you get the shingles, I think, you know, I think you'll see a big change, or hopefully.
So unless there's more on that. If we can, if I can just have Derek and then Matt just go through the, just briefly, the, the changes to the layout with the landscaping.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Derek Donave from DeAndrea Surveying and Engineering. We are the surveyors and site engineers for the project. Just to, I'm going to share my screen here for a second. And I'll just brief you, as Adam mentioned, there's a couple of things we handed into both DPW and WPCA recently. So the WPCA, they had wanted flow monitoring to verify that their existing infrastructure can handle the additional flow from this development. So the flow meter was installed and showed there was plenty of room in the, in the city pipes to handle the additional flow. And then for the DPW, just the more detailed drainage analysis and system. So we finalized that design and included, you know, so now the size of the systems and the elevations are all set to meet all the city standards. So that information's all been submitted into them. Some, some things that, from the original design that were changed in order to accommodate trying to save more woodland and more trees. On the original design, we had three conservation areas. We had this large one over here on the east. And, excuse me, that's the, the west. Another one over here to the east. And then we had a small lawn one over here. What we've done, and I've, since then, this was back in August, we shifted this lower set of units here, which is units one through eight. We shifted those to the west and which opened up this area where we were able to save three more large existing trees and increase the, the conservation easement over, area over here. And then we took these units up here and we tightened them up and shifted them this way. And these units here, we tightened them up and were able to shift these to the, to the south, which created another larger space up here and saved four other large existing trees. Over, overall, we increased the size of this conservation area by adding those up. And we, we eliminated this one over here, which is just an existing lawn right now. So it wasn't, it didn't have as much value as the woodland areas did. So we, so we increased that. And so overall, our conservation areas increased in size from what was previously proposed. Let's see. I guess I'll pass it over to Matt then. If there's any engineering questions, I know I did a presentation before on it, but if you have any additional engineering questions you can ask me. Otherwise, I'll pass it over to Matt, and he can talk about all the landscaping improvements and additions that he's put on.
Good evening. Matthew Pop, landscape architect for the project. I'll just give you a quick summary. I guess you're on my screen. Now, where we're at, this is kind of enlargement, Fulham Street. From the original submission, we added a number of significant, number of trees. We added 24 additional shade trees, 48 additional flowering trees, and 55 additional evergreen trees. When you add up all the trees together from the original proposal, the new ones in the wetland plantings, we have 399 trees. I should have, if I, if I known better, I would have added one more tree to make it an even 400. So I've gone out to Fulham Street.
Still can.
Still can, probably will. So what you see in here is Fulham Street. There's three residents here, 39, 40, 41. I mean, 41, 43, and 45s down here. Screening on the properties off-site is tough because properties slope up, there's rock, again, it's the approximate location of rocks. And then there's a sightline issue. So like the person backing out of 41, you can't really have any screening done in this area here on either side. And the cars come around here and, you know, and it's hard to see with any screening. So what I've done was, right through here, along the property line, now I added 35 additional green giant arbivores. That's a fast-growing arbivory, deer-resistant, probably grow maybe 35 feet in height, 30, 35 feet. Again, the fast-growing, probably, you know, maybe seven, eight feet in width. Right here, they're pretty tight. They would have to get field located within between existing vegetation out there. So I think that will provide additional screening. Now, right now, when you're standing like at this house, you look through these trees and you do get a view of the parking lot. The person in 39, what they were concerned about was, you know, and actually 41, are these trees going to, you know, remain? So I said, yes, those trees were proposed to stay. The only trees that are coming out are along here. I think there's six of them along the access route. So again, right now, we don't really have any additional off-site landscaping here. I did hand my business card to them, and if they wanted something very low, no, we could accommodate that. And again, we have the 35 additional trees here. So let's, quickly, if there's any questions.
Matt, what, what is, what is the approximate distance from the property line to the trees in the lighter green, which is just behind the units?
Back through here?
Yeah. What's the distance from there?
Me, 20. Maybe about from, say, from, from, probably, I would say, I'd guess maybe like 80 feet.
Okay.
You know, I'm looking down here at the parking, each one, two, two, four, five. That's probably like, you know, 45, you know, 50 feet in width. So maybe it's double that. So, and again, the parking lot goes right up to the light green. So we're pulling back and add in about, I think it's 20 feet, 18 to 20 feet of additional landscaping buffer that, you know, would be beneficial to the neighbors.
Thank you.
Matt, what about the back row, the bottom row of, I can't tell, no, the south, I guess that's south, right there? Yeah, what does that look like where it gets down where the other building abuts or gets closer?
Our property land is right here. So, so this is kind of off the site, and this is what it, just like this up here, mainly Norway maples.
No, but if we go, if we go further down the property line for the, what is it? Yeah, yeah, the, but, keep going all the way down, sorry.
Yeah, I think.
Like over the last row of homes, like what's the distance between that? Yeah, this last row and then the building that's all the way to the, like the neighbor to the south.
This building there?
Yeah, so what's the cover or the, you know?
Right now, there's some evergreens, kind of, I would say, call it like park-like. But there's a path, this center is, you know, they have a footpath through here. No, there, no, we do have, again, on our property, we do have arbivores kind of blocking, to provide screening from the, the bigger apartment building off the site. You know, it's probably from building to building maybe 80 feet or so. Again, 50 feet from here to here. So that, that's probably at least, you know, another three, I would say at least maybe 80 feet.
Matt, I'll just, I, I just scaled it out for everyone. So between that building and the property line is a little over 50 feet. And then we have an additional 15 feet on our side from the property line to the rear of our building. So it's close to what Matt was saying there. It's about, it's about 70 feet in total when you add all together.
And you feel good about that screening there?
Yeah, no, the, the green giant arbivores, they grow extremely quick. I have in my yard, it's actually grown pretty quite fast in shade even. But this is full sun. So I think that they would do well. You know, there's, again, there's opportunity to screen off the site if, you know, if, but again, we tried to keep everything on the site for now.
That makes sense.
So, yeah. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Then if there's not more for, for Matt right now? Then if there's not more for, for Matt right now. So the, the last thing that came up at the last public hearing. From, which was a concern raised by some of the neighbors, again, on Fulton. Related to the sightlines and the safety, both of the, the proposed crosswalk and the sightlines in and out of. Our property on Fulton. And I think, again, Derek and Greg Del Rio. Can talk to you a little bit about the sightlines and the crosswalks and they've done some more modeling since that last public hearing.
Sorry, I was on mute. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Greg Del Rio, traffic engineer for Harvestian Hanover. At Harvestian Hanover for the team. So yeah, the last time at the last hearing, there was some concern expressed over sightlines. And the potential for parking to impede those sightlines. So city regulation for local roads is 250 feet for the sightlines, which is provided. So here's, you know, the vehicle at the stop line waiting to get out and there's the line showing 250 feet. And 250 feet to the other direction. Clear. There was some concern that cars parked along the curb may impede some of those sightlines. So we've gone ahead and just modified the plan to. Show parking restrictions for approximately two parking spaces. On each side to make sure that a car parked along the curb wouldn't impede those, those sightlines. So that's the, that's very quick update on the, on the latest plan and how we address those concerns.
No, nothing more to add to that. I believe the last time we had showed the view of when we were standing in the street. Because we're on the outside of the curve for Fulton Road, our site actually has very nice sightlines in both directions. So all of our sightlines stay within the right of way. And when you stand out there, you can see pretty far in both directions unobstructed.
So unless there's other questions for the team. In conclusion, we, the application, we believe complies with all of your zoning regulations, complies with plan of conservation and development. And, and your special permit criteria, we're happy to again, answer questions from you or the public and hope that you'll act favorably on the application. Thank you.
Attorney Blank, I have a question. Am I on?
Yes, you're on.
Unless I'm not remembering this right, I, I thought the last time that we were talking about the. Exiting from this project, that it was going to be left turn only and you weren't going to be asking for restricted parking for the neighbors. Did I remember that wrong?
I, I, I don't have any recollection of that, that, that occurring. Maybe I'm wrong, but I don't, I don't remember it and it never came up with anybody on our team after that meeting. The sightlines are fine.
Well, the sightlines are fine as long as people aren't parked on the street. But I thought that there was a, quite a bit of discussion about how. Virtually every house on that street is either a one car garage or a one car wide driveway. And that they utilize the parking on the street.
No, I think I, maybe, maybe Greg or Derek can pull back up the sightline, but I don't think that the parking on the street. Doesn't impact the sightline other than the first space or two to the right or the left of our exit, which is where there's proposed no parking.
Where would the no part, what side of the road would the no parking be on?
It's right here, if you can.
Can you blow that up for us?
Yeah, especially me.
Oh, that's much better. Thank you.
Okay, sorry. All right, there you go. So yeah, it's just a couple of spaces on each side. This would be the start of the no parking right here before the proposed crosswalk. And then very similar distance on the other side. From our observations and the few finds we've been out in the field, the parking has been. You know, mostly on the other side against the properties, there's been very little parking that happens there. But, you know, again, just to make sure. That's being proposed.
Does that make sense, Mr. Rowena?
It obviously makes sense. I, my recollection is that. You were going to make this a left-hand turn only because I remember I went back there and looked at it and I thought, yeah, it's no big deal. Because you can make a left and then a right and get out to the same place as if you made a right. But. If it works, I guess I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, and the cities, on the city side, they didn't, they didn't suggest that either. We didn't, we didn't see an issue. And honestly, I, if it was raised, we, we missed it on our team because we really didn't. Never, never thought of that.
All right. Thank you for the time.
Any other questions for Mr. Blank's team? Attorney Blank, have you completed your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I know that we have at least one person that wishes to speak. Brian, would you explain how people can get online and address us?
Sure. So for anyone from the public who'd like to speak on this application, you can use the raise your hand tool. It's at the bottom of your screen. If you're dialed in on a phone, you could hit star nine and that would raise your hand. And with that, I can bring over Jane. And then just a reminder to say your name and address for us and then bring you over.
Good evening. I'm Jane Rubenstein. My husband Mark and I reside in the 597 complex. Specifically in the building that you are referencing at the southern border of the proposed development. We do have some concerns. I'm sorry, we missed the first meeting, but we do have some concerns about the density of building. That is going on at approximately four acres of buildable land. I mean, the total parcel is a little above seven. But as you showed, a lot of it is open space, wetlands and designated as open space. We're particularly concerned about the southern border. Where there are, there are five duplexes and it seems like that's a lot of dense building very close to the southern border of the property. And we are concerned is this overbuilding on a very small parcel close to the property line. We were proposing, is there any way that those duplexes could be single family homes, which would lower the density? We also have some concern at how close the patios particularly appear to the property line. Because although you say the back of the building is a 15-foot setback. It appears that the patios extend practically up to the property line. The other area we want to reference is in addition, a precedent exists when 597 was built. There was a condition for the approval of the project was a row of 20-foot blue spruce trees on Hills Lane. And this was a condition to provide a privacy screen for the residents in the pre-existing Terra Nova property. We're requesting that a similar privacy screen be created that from the get-go provides shielding. For the large number of people who reside in the apartment complex at the southern border. Because these units are going to be very close to the property line. And we're also hoping that in addition to that prior permanent privacy screen, that could be some kind of a temporary barrier during construction. To prevent some of the dirt and debris, debris from shedding right down on the 597 property. So those are most of my comments for.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak?
Yeah, let me just bring them over. Charlene, I saw your hand up. I'll bring you over. I might have accidentally. Charlene, you just unmute yourself.
Okay. Um, from the meetings that.
I'm sorry, Ms. Kennedy. God, pardon me, Ms. Kennedy. Can you tell us your address, please?
Sure. I'm number 41 Fulton Road.
Thank you.
And from the last meeting. There was one person who had said something about making a left turn or to have it so that would only be a left turn. But we, the neighbors who are in front of the, in front of the driveway, we disagree with that. I mean, if this does go through, it should be allowed to go through both ways, not one way. And the second thing is that the crosswalk, we were totally against that. Because now it feels like you're turning our neighborhood into some type of a school. Where you would have a crosswalk. You don't see many streets having crosswalks on them unless there's a school involved. And the other feeling of now starting to put signs up with no parking. This is like taking everything away from us. To compromise for the new. Units, units, and it's not fair to our street. It feels like everything is being taken away from Fulton Road. And not for the new place. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Dottie Brown.
Okay, Johnny Brown, 43, Fulton Road. I'd like to know that myself. And the owner of 45 phone have not been contacted to address screening concerns, crosswalk issues or parking problems. I'd like to just note that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if anyone else from the public would like to speak, you could use the raise your hand tool now. Ms. Rubenstein, we typically only allow members to speak once. But I'll leave that up for the chairman.
No, in fairness, we, we can only, only allow people to speak once. If you, if you have more to say, you're certainly welcome to put it in writing.
I think that's everybody, Lou.
Okay, but then we'll turn it back over to Attorney Blank.
Thank you. Share my screen for a second. Okay, so you guys see my screen? Yeah?
Yes.
So what I've got up for you, this giant white four-story mass is 597 West Port Avenue. Remember, we're two stories. This is four stories. And the property owner elected to build as. Very large complex as close to the property line as possible. And we are certainly providing, as Matt went through it, the arbivide and some additional screening along that back wall. But I, I think that, that, you know, the concerns about our density, we're nowhere near the density of this, of the 597 building. We don't tower over it like, like that does. And, and we'll definitely complement the, the neighborhood. The. As to the neighbors on, on Fulton. I think that the crosswalk is really necessary for safety purposes. This is elderly housing. So I don't think this is going to, I think there was a concern about being like a school or buses or students, something about that. And that's not, obviously not going to be the, the case from our development. And right now, and we will be having quite a bit of additional parking in our complex for our residents. So we don't, we don't see it taking any of the quote Fulton neighbors parking, which really is public parking anyway. And they, they do have all of our immediate neighbors have driveways that will accommodate two to three cars each in their driveways. And, and this will be providing them with a, a new place where they can safely, you know, walk in a. 400-treed neighborhood. So. We, we don't see there being any real traffic concerns and the crosswalk is really there for, for safety, as is the removal of. Just a couple of parking spaces on the opposite side of the street, which both in our, Greg Del Rio and in the developers. Visits to the site is rarely taken. There's parking often on the opposite side of Fulton, but not, not where our site is. And I think that addresses the, the concerns to the best that I can.
Any further questions from members of the commission? Well, if not, we'll close the hearing and move on in the agenda.
Thank you.
All right. Excuse me. Second item is review and action on pending applications. And that would be action on item 3A, the public hearing that we just closed. Is there a motion to either approve or disapprove the project?
I move to approve.
Mr. Rowena moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Witherspoon, seconds. Discussion?
What do folks think about the crosswalk notion? Do they like it? Do they not like it? Do we care?
I would hope that the crosswalk would act as a bit of a traffic calming situation, given the new law that's just been enacted. I would just hope that pedestrians don't necessarily rely on that law, but. It should help.
Yeah, I think more crosswalks are better than lesser, fewer crosswalks. You know, it, it does provide a safe place for people to cross the street. I think that's a reasonable thing.
We've certainly heard a lot of complaints. Particularly in the downtown area about the need for additional safe crosswalks. So I personally have no objection to the crosswalk. And I agree with, I think it was Richard, that it, it may serve to some degree as a traffic calming measure.
I completely agree with what everyone just said here.
Yeah, I think it'll make the community safer.
Stephen, can I ask you to put up the. Action that we have agreed to consider?
That is. All right, I can't, I can help you out, Lou. Also, I just wanted to, for the record, acknowledge that Conservation has approved with conditions of the application. But I'll bring up the, the resolution as well.
Okay. Michelle, the. Conditions that Conservation has raised, are they included here?
They were in, on the. Attachment for the resolution for you guys, but this is Alexis's from Conservation, so just so people can see their.
Okay.
Resolution.
Can you blow that up just a bit? Thank you.
Let me know if you want me to move it.
I'm ready for you to move it.
Okay. Do you want the other? Resolution? This is primarily.
There's, I'd like, I'd like to see our resolution. Yeah, this is theirs. I'd like, I'd like to see our resolution.
So it starts here, um, just to note, I did change a date that was different, and then, um, when I moved farther down, there was another edit different than what you guys received.
Is the, um, architect, not architecture, landscaping for the neighbors in here? I scanned it this morning and I, I might have missed it.
As, as far as a condition or the, the plan itself?
A condition for the approval.
Um, and this is to add screening on their personal properties?
Yep.
Um, I have that, uh, condition written out, but it's not added to here. I'm not sure if you guys wanted to include that.
All right, well, let's, uh, let's review the rest of the language of, of this one. And then we can discuss, uh, the inclusion of anything else. Um, uh, number ten, any changes to the approved plan must be reviewed by staff. That doesn't sound like it has any teeth.
Uh, yeah.
Could we say that it has to be approved by staff before implementation?
Sure.
Does that make sense to everyone?
Yes.
Yes.
Michelle, is number six, what you added in before we got to take a look at it, is that why it's highlighted?
So it's highlighted originally, it just said that it required solar panels on each structure, so based on the specific regulation and our conversation tonight, it just was more clear that, um, it would be required unless determined not feasible by the feasibility report. So I just kind of cleaned it up a little bit.
Okay, uh, can you move that up a little further? Thank you. Uh, Nick, do you have a proposed addition?
My proposed addition would be the, um, neighbors, the neighborhood landscaping.
Well, how do we phrase that?
I leave that.
Number, number one, to make sure that what the neighbors are requesting is reasonable. Um, because, you know, they can say, you know, I, I want a hundred and fifty arborvitae's on my property to screen it. Uh, and, uh, the developer, uh, might very well say no to something like that.
Should we leave it to staff to, uh, arbitrate if it gets to that point?
I think that makes sense.
Is there anyone else? Just, just so, just so we know, and so we're clear on this, where specifically in the regs does it discuss this kind of thing? You know, just where, you know, how much discretion does staff actually have legally to require the developer to put X number of trees in place?
In regards to, um, like, the special permit requirements, that's, that's kind of where the landscaping caveat comes, where, where the staff has discretion on reviewing the landscaping and commission reviewing it to require a certain amount or, um, things like that, or I think in the elderly housing section doesn't speak to that.
You know, Josh, it's because it's a, a special permit. Right now, I understand. We can exercise this authority.
No, 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 that I understand. It's the, um, I was trying to follow up to your example, which is if there was an unreasonable request, and not whatever the language in the, in the, in, in, in this document here should say that, you know, that there should be a determination as to the reasonableness of the request.
Well, that seems, that seems reasonable.
Reasonable. But I, I think I was trying to kind of follow up from what Louis said, in case there is, what staff considers an unreasonable request, given the circumstances.
My, my view is I think we can trust the staff
Right.
uh, to protect both, uh, the city's interest, uh, as well as the legitimate interests of, uh, the developer.
And the residents in mind as well.
Absolutely.
All three.
Yeah. Uh, Steve, do we need language, or can we rely on you and your staff to develop that language for us?
Hey, Steve hopped off for planning.
Oh.
Okay.
Then it falls to, falls to you, Brian, to answer the question.
Um, I, I think it would be better to, to have it in there so that we're, you know, voting on language that you're all agreeing on. Um, so if, you know, Michelle, you want to put something that's similar to what we've done in the past, and, you know, landscaping to be, you know, reviewed by staff?
Well, this is specific. This is landscaping on the property of others.
So, it, it, do we want it to, the specific neighbors at the front, so should we have the?
It's about adjacent properties, so that this is, right, this is not about the actual property itself.
Okay. Let, let me, give me a moment, see if I can just maybe propose something and see if you guys like it.
Michelle, if I can interrupt one second. You know, I, I think the language on this, in light of how many trees and how many arborvitae's the developer has already planted for screening purposes, I think the language ought to indicate that the function of doing landscaping on neighbors' properties is to further screen the view, and there's got to be, you know, some relationship with, between what's being planted and, and what the function of it is supposed to be. It's not for re-landscaping anybody's yard, it's to assist in, in screening. And I guess there are some limitations based on, on sightlines as well. That was longer than I meant it to be, sorry.
So I hear what you're saying is no koi ponds as a result of this.
Yes, something like that.
Okay.
All right. Sorry about that.
I think we want to add something along the lines of staff oversight, with staff, some sort of, making.
As, yeah, like as determined reasonable by staff, I guess.
Yeah.
And then, Michelle, I think you want to take the first in neighbor's will out.
Right. Uh, applicant stays.
I would, applicant will, applicant.
Applicant will work with the neighbor, so, yeah, and neighbor's getting comes out. Um, okay.
Uh, the applicant's event. Fullen Road. Where it says Fullen.
Looks good to me.
I would, instead of it saying where and if the neighbor consents, I would just change it stylistically so that, uh, with reasonable additional landscape screening to be located um, at the applicant's expense, um, with consent of the neighbor. You just have to join them.
Join with consent.
With consent of the, of the neighbor.
Of the neighbor.
And then, where it says, as determined reasonable by staff, that's, is that supposed to be the end of a sentence? Uh, I'm, or is that the way it's written usually?
Um, Usually, it can be stuck like that, but we can change it if you guys like. Or I can say.
Michelle, this is where I think something should go in, that the landscaping, you know, has to be, the, this landscaping has to be related to, um, not related, has to accomplish screening.
Yeah, um.
You can do, so reasonable additional landscaping for the purpose of screening.
Yes. And I assume we do not have to define the word screening. Everyone understands what this word means in the text. Some, uh, of screening.
Is that acceptable?
I think for the purpose of screening, instead of with the purpose of screening, but.
Yeah, okay. Yep.
Why the attorneys get paid the big bucks?
Yeah.
I'm right there with you, Brian.
I think we'll accomplish the purpose.
Yep, I think we're good. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So move.
All right, uh, why don't we say moved by Richard and seconded by Josh? And, uh, let's do a roll call on this.
Sure, let's see here. Uh, Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
And Mr. Scholman?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay, motion passes. Let's, uh, move on to, uh, review and action on, uh, new applications. Uh, the first is, uh, twenty-twenty-one dash thirty-seven R, Oak Hills Park Authority, um, text amendment to remove full service from the restaurant use for Oak Hills Golf Course. Preliminary review. Uh, and I'd ask, uh, the person representing Oak Hills to come on and explain to us.
Yes, good evening. Uh, this is Randall Avery. I'm off of mute, but I'm unable to start the video because the host has disabled it.
Sorry about that, Randall. See if you can. There you are.
All right, great. Good evening, everyone. Uh, I hope to try to be fairly brief about, about this. Perhaps, uh, the majority of the members of the commission are familiar with the, with the restaurant that the city erected at Oak Hills Park in the early two thousands. It's a small restaurant. It has about, uh, twenty-five hundred square feet. Uh, when it was first built, uh, the city had hoped to develop a successful restaurant there that did not depend on a bar. And so, when the city leased the property to the authority, uh, no bar was permitted except a service bar. Uh, after s- a succession of failed operators at the facility in recent years, starting as far back as twenty thirteen, the authority and the city eventually were able to come to an agreement to amend the lease when they extended it to give the authority control over the management of the property for another fifteen years by allowing, uh, a, allowing there to be a bar service, bar to, uh, serve the customers in the restaurant. In the course of developing the bar, uh, the authority discovered that there is an, a wording for, of all-season, full-service restaurant that restricts the length of such a bar to fifteen feet, which would effectively serve about five or six people at the bar. Uh, that is inconsistent with the desires of the public that are using the facility, who have been seeking over these last four or five years for there to be a more traditional type of, uh, bar associated with a, with a golf course. And so, we're seeking to change the text of the definition of full-service, uh, all-season restaurant that restricts it to fifteen feet by simply removing a couple of words that would allow the bar to be larger. Uh, I want to thank Brian of your, of your staff for helping, uh, Oak Hills Management understand the regulation and how it might be changed to accommodate, uh, the need. So that's the purpose of the, of the text change. And, uh, Don Masternardi, who is, uh, the general manager of the authority, uh, is also, I see on the line and is, is able to answer any questions you might have about this text change application.
Are there, are there questions from, uh, the commission members? Because this is a, uh, text amendment, uh, we'll need to, uh, refer it to the Planning Commission, so we're not in a position to take any action this evening. Um, and once we hear back from the Planning Commission, uh, we can schedule a, a public hearing on this matter.
So can I just ask one question? I just want to make sure I'm understanding this, Brian. Is this just because somewhere in the regulations, there's a definition of this notion of a full-service restaurant, and a full-service restaurant can only have a fifteen fo- oh, my dear Lord, this feels like, uh, this feels.
So, so.
I don't know law school.
No.
Right.
See previous comment.
So out of all of the zone, out of all the uses, we, we've have a definition for a full-service restaurant, and in that definition, it limits the bar to be fifteen feet. And there's only three zones which actually have that use, which are AAA, essentially for Oak Hills, um, Washington Street, and then, I think, East Avenue Village District. Every other business zone, so, uh, Sono, uh, Central Business on Wall Street just uses the, the term restaurant, which we have decided does not, is not the same and can have as, you know.
As much of a bar as you want.
Right.
Oh my, it feels like a funk, like this is like a ca- like a case of like spot zoning or something very like bespoke. This is, is this like?
I raised that question, uh, uh, Nick. Um, and I've been assured that it's not by, by staff, that it's not spot zoning. Uh, but I understand, because I. Uh, but I understand because I raised the same question.
I'm just more I I feel for the applicant that this is like, you know, that they have to go through this anyway, and hopefully in the rewrite things like this will hopefully go away.
Well, two ways to resolve it. We can do a text amendment or we can take a chainsaw to it.
Yeah, I mean, look, I I think the ideal for something as. Something is small scale at this, the fact that this has to go to a public hearing is something probably you're gonna have to fix. But, um, I'm also wondering why, and I don't know if this is an available option, whether, you know, a variance is at all within the cards here that would expedite the process. Or it doesn't need to, or I don't know if this is something that needs to be expedited or not.
So I think, um, in terms of process, this is the better one, because if you send this to ZBA for a variance. Um, the ZBA has to look for a hardship with the property.
Okay.
And, you know, in my opinion, there isn't one.
So.
So I mean, if there are no other questions, we'll simply refer it to the planning commission when they've taken action, um, we'll schedule a public hearing.
Yep.
And if you have any additional questions, this is Don Masternardi. Sorry, uh, you can always reach out to me as well. If you have any additional questions you want to take offline or.
Thank you. You know, Brian?
You're welcome.
How many other? How many other? Do you? I mean, I don't know if you know this at all. How many other properties in Norwalk? How many other places have this issue? Where they the words full service like this?
So it comes up a lot on Washington Street. Um, I think I think their original intent behind that. Use of full service restaurant was mostly for Washington Street. Um, and then just somehow it ended up being thrown into a couple other zones and then impacting them as well.
Yeah, I'm wondering about getting rid of the term entirely. So we don't have to do this again.
Yeah, I think that's something that with the regulatory rate, I think it's going to get tackled.
I don't know if others are where I am on this one, but I I think that this is considering the nature of this application. It feels silly to have to ever do this again.
Well, you know, the the. The virtue of it, you know, like in Washington Avenue is not to have just a bunch of buyers with instead of restaurants. Now, if you didn't have full service restaurant, you conceivably would just have a bunch of buyers like remember when true true. For whatever it is ninety four came before us and it's just a bar, but they had to serve food. So they had, you know, a menu of like pop tarts.
Oh, that's that's what it's getting at.
Okay, I didn't.
Oh.
I I was focusing on the words full service and did not focus on the word restaurant.
I mean, I think that's the purpose of it is to see to it that it isn't just a bar, that it's a restaurant.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, we're agreed. We'll.
Yeah.
This forward as appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next item. Thirteen dash sixteen SP main Norwalk LLC, the village extension of time request. Um, and I believe that's attorney suchi.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Thank you.
Where where are you talking to us from this evening?
Oh, this is, um, high above the Amalfi Coast on the path of the gods.
Very lovely.
Which we were all there. Thank you for taking this up this evening. Uh, we've been before you in the past for extensions of time in connection with the proposed hundred thousand plus square foot retail center that was approved by this commission in two thousand seventeen. The prior request for extension of time. Were approved by you. And once again, we're confronted with remnant issues from COVID, and that is not only just where we are in the process, getting plans revised and reviewed, but also the lingering impact of construction. Uh, material costs, construction costs and things of that nature. We have engaged a number of contractors to solicit new pricing in light of the construction costs and the material costs. And we're asking for another one year extension so that we can go through that process and hopefully not have to come back before you again. Um, it has been reviewed by DOT's District Three in New Haven. Construction drawings have been prepared. Whatever is required of is at least at this stage from OSTA, and that was the recording of a traffic report that's been done. But COVID really has put in a damper on how to proceed and get proper costing for the project just because of the the increase in costs, both materials and construction. So if you could give us another year, we'd be appreciative.
Attorney suchi, uh, can you tell us, do you have a tenant for the property?
At right now, no, I I we do not have a tenant. Uh, that is also something that comes into the mix. Um, but we do not have a tenant right now.
Thank you. Questions? All right, if if not, can I have a motion to approve a one year extension?
So move.
Uh, Mr. Witherspoon moves. There a second?
I'll second it.
Um, and, um. Mr. Rowena seconds. Uh, any any discussion at all?
I'd just like to say this was the first project I ever voted on as his only commissioner. I hope it happens.
Um, all right, uh, let's, um, we can do this, I think, with a show of hands. Uh, all in favor, if you would raise your hand.
My hands raised.
Okay, Galen is your hand. Okay. Uh, it looks like it's unanimous. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, it's approved.
Thank you.
Uh, next item, uh, fourteen dash oh nine SP Norwalk Hospital thirty four Maple Street. Bond release for the demolition of a four hundred and thirty space parking garage and construction of six hundred and twenty eight space. Uh, parking garage. Um, Brian, you want to speak? Speak to this?
I will recuse myself.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
So attorney suchi is still here for this one as well. Um, Liz is our. But, um, they have received their their CO, so, um, they are all set with with zoning.
Okay, uh, this is typically a, uh, simple and straightforward matter. Once, uh, once they have their CEO, we. Um, typically release the bond. Uh, any any questions for attorney suchi? All right, if not, I think we can handle this in the same way with a show of hands. Uh, all those in favor of releasing the hospital's bond? Um, Richard?
I agree.
Okay, Galen, Galen's got a hand up. Uh, okay, uh, it's unanimous, uh, with Michael Witherspoon, um, recusing himself. Thank you. Uh, next item twenty twenty one dash thirty two SP, and I apologize for my pronunciation here, the Guru Tag. Bahandur G Foundation, two eighty three Richards Avenue, construction of a two story Sikh religious center. This is a preliminary review. Um, this is not a public hearing as a result. Uh, we will not be, uh, accepting any comment from the public. Uh, public comment, um, will be heard during the public hearing, which will be scheduled at a later date. Um, who is going to make the presentation?
I will, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. For the record, my name is Liz Suchi. I am a partner with the law firm of many torrent Sandec in Hennessy. Our office is at seven oh seven Summer Street in Stamford, and we represent the Guru Tag Bahadur G Foundation, which is the owner of the property and the applicant before you on this special permit application. Tonight with us is Christi Angelus. He is the project civil engineer of De Angelis, uh, Cabezas De Angelis at Bridgeport. Marcos Reinheimer is the project architect and he is with Primrose and also present this evening is Mahender, excuse me, Mohanda Kasi, one of the members of the congregation, as well as Pama Gulati, the president of the congregation. And there's there's Mohinder and Pama will be on, uh, hopefully in shortly. As indicated, the property is at two eighty three Richards Avenue. It is a vacant site. It's just over an eight. And it has been bacon for several years. It was on the market for several years, and my client purchased it with the concept of creating a gurdwara, which is a house of worship for this Norwalk Sikh community. And associated parking, landscaping, lighting, and other site improvements. The property is not on city water or city septic, so a well and excuse me, it is not on city water or city sewer, so the project contemplates a well and. Septic system, excuse me. By way of housekeeping, neighbors who a button are located across the street from the property were notified of the submission of the application on August eleventh. The application was filed on August ninth. And those those notices were sent by certificate of mailing and the certificate was returned to the city in accordance with regulations. All of the application and supporting documentation are on file with cities, uh, planning and zoning department. It was also referred to the Department of Public Works. The Health Department and the Transportation Mobility and Parking Department as is required. Finally, a CAC meeting, which stands for Code Enforcement Administration Committee, was conducted on September eighth, and from that meeting and the various reviews by the departments. We've received comments, questions, and, uh, we are in the process of first of providing additional responses. We responded to the CAC meeting comments and others from departments on September twenty seventh, and we just today have received some additional comments from. The Health Department and Department of Public Works, which we are going to be responding to. The proposed building and the site improvements, as has been indicated in the memo by staff, all meet or exceed the zoning requirements for a house of worship in this zone. So at this point, I think it's important for me to address some various misconceptions and mistruths and other inaccurate information that seem to be promulgated out to the public. So that we're all clear as to what's being proposed and why and how it fully complies with the app, the requirements of the zone. First, a house of worship is permitted in this zone by special permit. There is no zone change, variance, text amendment. Or other application necessary for this property to be used as a house of worship and to be developed in that regard. There are three other houses of worship in the immediate vicinity, the Temple Shalom, United Congregational Church, and also Saint Matthews. Uh, some have questioned the minimum lot size. Well, lots, uh, the lot is an excess of the minimum requirement for a triple A resident zone. Non residential uses in the B, C, and D zones require larger lots, but not in the triple A residential. So this lot is fully compliant and fully large enough for a house of worship in accordance with your regulations. The building height of the proposed gurdwara is two and a half stories and fifty feet. Some may wonder why can that be, but houses of worship. Uh, do are allowed to exceed the thirty five foot height requirement for residential structures. And in any event, this structure is just under thirty nine feet to the peak, so it is completely compliant with the height and number of stories for houses of worship in the triple A resident zone. Furthermore, the zoning regulations do exempt church spires and similar architectural features, so the domes proposed on the gurdwara are exempt from zoning. Height restrictions. Uh, the setbacks for this property are a little bit unusual for once again. A special permit has additional requirements for non residential uses in a residential zone as they relate to setbacks. So the front setback is nearly eighty feet. The side setbacks are exceedingly, um, they they exceed what is typically required for residential structures. But in any event, all setbacks require with the city zoning regulations as they relate to non residential structures in this zone. Lastly, one of the questions that's come up is, is the property, is the development properly parked for the number of, um, seats in the house of worship? Your parking requirements that are codified and have been consistently applied and the past and practice of this commission and the department. Is that all houses of worship must provide one parking space for every five seats within the worship area based upon maximum capacity? One of the questions that was raised by zoning staff was what is that maximum seating in the how in the worship center? And the plans show that there are two hundred forty seats in the maximum capacity in the worship center. That requires forty eight parking spaces and we are proposing fifty three. So if there is some desire by either staff, traffic, mobility and parking or others, that a different ratio be applied. This is a policy decision that you must must be implemented in a lawful, non discriminatory manner. By the promulgation enactment of regulations that would change that ratio from one to five to something else. But today, this house of worship and the parking that's required for it meets the requirements of the zoning regulations and is consistent with the parking ratio applied to all other houses of worship, not only at Richards Avenue, but throughout the city. Last, another comment that we'd like to address is this is not an opportunity for the Sikh congregation, which has been a member of the Norwalk community and part of its fabric for nearly thirty years, to enlarge the congregation. It is an opportunity for my client to offer a reverent and proper venue for the free exercise and practice of their religion, just like members of many other denominations in Norwalk. Catholic religion, Jewish Protestant Baptist Episcopalian Greek Orthodox Methodist Pentecostal and all other denominations. Have appropriate and reverent houses of worship, and that is what my client would like to afford to members of its congregation. Finally, if none of you have ever been to a service at a Sikh house of worship or gurdwara, I suggest that you would you visit. It's a very interesting and unique experience. As a Catholic, I'm used to coming to mass at ten, staying till ten forty five. You come at the beginning and you leave at the end. And you have, there's a component part, there are component parts to the entire service that win which you participate. The Sikh service is a little bit different. Members of the community arrive at ten at eleven thirty for the service. Um, some arrive a little later, some arrive afternoon, but the service is a little more fluid. So it's not something that all of its members of the congregation must arrive at eleven thirty, and then they all depart when it's over at twelve thirty or twelve forty five. Some will arrive before, some will arrive midway through, some may arrive toward the end and be present for the prayer services that exist. After the Sunday prayer, after the Sunday service, there's a communal lunch that is offered to anyone in the community. The lunches are prepared by members of the congregation and generally each week a family purchases the food, prepares the food and serves those members who stay for lunch after services. Um, the gurdwara in Norwalk currently exists at six twenty two West Avenue. And prior to COVID, there had been a Friday evening service from seven thirty to nine thirty. Those services have been suspended, and right now there isn't any plan to reactivate those services. But perhaps in the future that may come to pass. Uh, lastly, in the morning at five AM, the scripture is opened and the the priest at the gurdwara conducts a a small ceremony. And does the same in the evening when the scripture is closed, but there aren't services at those hours. The only service that's offered to its membership is on Sunday from eleven thirty to twelve thirty, followed by the communal luncheon. There is no proposal with this project to have a daycare center. There is no proposal to have, um, uh, summer camp. It is strictly for a worship center so that the Sikh community can properly and reverently worship their religion, practice their religion, uh, just like any other denomination in Norwalk. So at this point, um, I would prefer if Christi Angelus could screen share the site plan. He can walk you through that and show you what we are proposing. And then after Chris, Marcos Reinheimer, the project architect, will come on to walk you through the, um, exterior elevations and floor plans.
Attorney suchi?
Yes.
If I if I may, um, I was curious in looking at, uh, the plan. That the plans, uh, included, um, two bedrooms. And I was just curious, uh, to to know why why those are included, uh, in a religious institution.
Those are for the resident priests who provide the these services and who offer the prayers and conduct the services at the gurdwara.
Okay, so there will be someone living there.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. And I will now, uh, Chris, if you're ready to go, I will mute myself and there we go.
Sure. Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Chris De Angelis, a civil engineer with Cabezas De Angelis. Our offices in Bridgeport, Connecticut. Um, so what I have up in front of the screens are the plans that were, uh, recently resubmitted, uh, to the city. These incorporate, uh, many of the comments, uh, or all the comments really that we received from the various departments, uh, in the city. Um, some of the reviews are still ongoing, but the number of comments we've received are greatly reduced. The ones, uh, the plans that you see in front of you have addressed. You know, all all the comments to our satisfaction, but there's still, I guess, a few outstanding comments that we may, uh, we may have to 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 go into a little bit more detail with. Um, so what I'm gonna do is just kind of quickly scroll through, um, the site plans, point out, um, some of the key elements of the site, uh, what was recently changed. And then I will turn it over to Marcos for the, um, architectural, uh, review. Uh, so zoom in a little bit. What you're seeing on the screen now is the site plan. You can see that the, uh, the driveway, um, the the northern driveway off of Richards Avenue is now one way. Uh, previously it was a two way driveway. We reduced the width from twenty four feet to eighteen feet. Um, to make it one way just for better circulation around the site. We have a conventional counter clockwise, uh, traffic circulation. And the southern driveway remains a one way exit. Um, this moves the driveway further from the intersection. and helps to spread out the incoming and the outgoing traffic, just to again help improve people getting in and out of the site. We do show the sight lines on on our site, on the traffic report does note the sight lines. They were checked and they are adequate and meet the city's regulations. The building is located in the center of the site. Parking on on the three sides. There is a main entrance at the front, of course, and then a second entrance at the rear of the building, which is at the lowest, the basement level of the building. Another change from the previous plan that was submitted is the width of the driveway, the width of the parking lot back, the aisle way was reduced by two or three feet. And we did that to get a little bit more buffer along the south property line. We do have a retaining wall along the south property line. Varies in height at its highest point in the middle. It's about 10 feet high. And originally it was placed right on the property line. But we did move it back by narrowing the aisle in the rear parking lot so that we could get some more plantings and screenings along the base of that wall. Another important comment change that was made was the perimeter fence. We have a fence that goes around most of the north side, the entire south side, and then most of the south side up to about this point right here. And that was originally called out to be a PVC coated chain link fence, but we changed it to be more opaque. So it's currently a six foot high PVC solid panel fence.
Mr. DeAngelis, can you explain, excuse me, why why the fence wasn't extended further toward Richards Avenue?
We just didn't feel it was necessary. I think the views on each side are not. You know, at that point, you're blocking almost the entire building if the point is to block the building and the parking, we could extend it. There are some trees along each edge that we thought might be salvageable. If it's the commission's wish or the neighbors wish to extend, I don't think that would be a problem.
Okay, thank you.
So that is the site plan. Oh, another another comment that came from your engineering department was the sidewalk along Richards Avenue. Prior, we were just going to keep the existing sidewalk that was there. It's a bituminous sidewalk. It's four feet wide. It's in good shape, so we didn't feel it was necessary to replace it, but we were asked to replace it with a new five foot wide concrete sidewalk, and so we we have done that. I will go to the the grading plan next. This shows the grading. There is a lot of grading around the site. There is an elevation change from the from the east side of the site to the west side of about 15 feet or so. There were comments from Mr. Jaron, your your city engineer regarding the analysis that we did for the stormwater system. We submitted a supplemental drainage letter and report, and we believe we have complied with with his with this comments. But the, I'll go to the to the lighting plan next because there were many comments on the lighting plan and the landscape plan. So this is the planting plan. It was it was beefed up again around the perimeter with many more evergreen plantings. You can see the additional plantings that were done along the back on the south. I'm sorry, yeah, on the on the west side, the northwest side of the property in front of the retaining wall. And then along the street, we added several more shade trees to help with shading of Richards Avenue. And again, you can you can see the the density of plants up on the, you know, the north and the south side of the property where the where the fence ends. One of the reasons to stop the fence at this point is just to allow the the plants to have more sunlight to grow, especially the lower lower shrubs. For the lighting, we we did modify the lighting a little bit. Took off two sight poles at the front of the building. We we added in a couple of balder lights which don't throw out as much light, obviously. We removed one of the light poles that was on the south side over in this area. And I believe we added one more light to the building. So again, we have a photometric plan. It meets your regulations as far as, you know, no light spillage over the property line. So that's it for the site stuff. You want to, if you have questions, I'll answer them now, or we can start looking at the the architectural drawings.
Sounds like we should go to the architecturals.
So Marcos, if you could come on, that would be helpful.
Yes, good evening. My name is Marcos Reinheimer. Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm with the Gads Associates Inc. from 1425 Noble Avenue in Bridgeport, Connecticut. We are the architects for this project. Talking a little bit about this this building. It is, consists of a first floor, second floor, and a full basement with the walkout to the rear parking lot. Each floor is around 6,000 square feet of gross area. So adding up to 18,000 square feet for the total gross area with the, you know, all the three floors. I'm going to start with the first floor. If you can just one more slide, Chris. So first floor was was designed to be used as the religious education hall. So it's a larger space that can be also subdivided into small classrooms by the use of removable importable partitions, as you can see on the the lower section of the the plan that can be moved around as needed. So to create small classrooms and separate groups into different classes for the religions education. It also accommodates two en suites, as mentioned by Attorney Sutchi. You know, the resident guru occupy one of those rooms. And there is also sometimes temporary gases as far as musicians that stay for some type of programs. So they have those two suites and a small lounge area that is, you know, privately used by those people. It also provided with a large female and a large male bathroom facility that is, you know, used by by the all the, you know, the occupants for the public use on this level. You know, other than that, we have the hall, the elevator hall and the entrance to the to the street and the stairwells to accommodate the grace and, you know, on both ends of the building. If we move a little bit more, we go to the second floor. Next slide. So on the second floor is where the worship hall is located. And as mentioned, it has a capacity for 240 seats. The occupancy is designed based on building code compliance as far as the square footage divided by the allowed square square feet per occupant. So give us the number of 240 occupants. That's that's calculation used for the the hall capacity. He also provided with one male and and one female fully ADA accessible bathroom at elevator lobby and the main entrance to the worship hall. And contains also other rooms that are used for either office or storage areas. They have also the areas for the coats and and shoes, you know. And so it's it's spread throughout the the plan and and the raised altar at the far left to the to the main or the second floor, the second floor. On the the basement level, if you go back to slides, Chris. So the basement is provided with a walkout access to the rear parking. So it is fully accessible as well as far as as entering directly directly to, you know, the the outside. And also, you know, the building is provided with elevator that is connect connects all the three three floors. So it's fully assessable as far as ADA compliance. And on this level, on the basement level, it accommodates a full kitchen that is used preparing the meals as mentioned by Attorney Sutchi for, you know, the community where volunteers from the community prepared meals for the other day stays after the services for the meals. So it is a full kitchen provided. It also contains the male and female bathroom facilities calculated based on the space for the number of plumbing fixtures as far as sinks and toilets. You have a janitor closet, a small laundry room with a washing dryer and also room for placement of coats and shoes. And that is pretty much on the three, the three levels. We have those those a matter as far as the coat closets and shoe shelf. Also, we have some space for the mechanicals as far to the right side, you know, have the space for the sprinkler room and and utilities. Now, as far as the exteriors, as as you guys can see on the the proposed elevation is announced on the the rendering. The architectural, the exterior architectural design was inspired on, you know, other gourduaras that retain a more traditional Sikh architecture. There is some other locations where they the buildings maybe were adopted to to be used, but this one sees as being built as a new structure. We incorporate a little bit more of the the traditional Sikh architecture with the use of decorative domes, cornices and arches, but at the same time introducing the use of more modern materials for the finish as far as low manis or, you know, deciding we're using composite synthetic stucco that is on an off-white color. And we use prefabricated domes that are usually usually made by by fabric fiberglass material and, you know, assembled over frame. And then the finishes are with the golden color. You know, so the the two prominent colors will be white with the accent in golden finishes for the arches and and the domes. And that's pretty much, that's pretty much what we we propose as far as as the building. And I think it's cohesive with the the culture. That's what we have in mind. And, you know, we we designed that in my to to create this space. So, you know, if the commission has any questions, we'd be glad to answer.
I'm not sure I understood. The worship hall is on the second floor. So upstairs and the floor, the first floor is the classrooms and then the basement is the dining hall and the kitchen. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Just a bit of information for you. The Sikh community in Norwalk is has 185 adult members. So the 240 seat capacity in the worship center is appropriate for the number of members that the community has. Pre-COVID, my client has had between 150 and 170 members attending services. Post-COVID, and for example, this past Sunday service, there are maybe 60 members in attendance plus children. So that's generally where the the numbers are falling in terms of congregants coming to service on on Sunday.
And Attorney Sutchi, just to get an idea of, I mean, I I read through some of the comments, you know, and I've, you know, that were submitted to the commission and there seemed to be a prevalent concern of traffic. And I guess the in terms of scheduling, I said that there's services typically the big services on Sunday. Is that, you know, and and even though the center is open, I assume Sunday is the only time where there's the the most people would attend at once. I think you're on mute.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Goldstein. As you, as I indicated earlier, the the main service is on Sundays from 11:30 to 12:30, followed by the communal meal. And there had been a service on Friday evenings, which was less attended than the main service on Sunday. But there aren't other services during the week. For example, like the Catholic Church has a seven or eight AM mass or five o'clock mass or has. And I'm just saying using Catholic because that's my religion and I'm more familiar with it, has a Saturday evening confession. Sunday is the the day of service.
And and the education, just a little bit about the educational school, the educational programming in the school. I mean, again, slightly similar style of question. I remember when I was a kid, I used to go to Hebrew school, you know, for a little bit in the morning. I don't know, in the Sikh tradition, if if there's the similar kind of, you know, schooling education system where, you know, where 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 children and students would come for programming at some point on the weekends or during the weekdays. I don't know if they, that's part of the thing. I just didn't hear about that in your introduction.
Sure. And I neglected to mention that in in greater detail. But yes, there is a religious education component. Religious classes are conducted on Sundays prior to the service. There are no religious educations classes during the week. It is strictly on Sunday. So some students, members of the congregation would drop off their children prior to the service. They may stay in the gourdwaara for reflection or for prayer, or they may go home. They may come back and then join their children for the service in the gourdwaara afterward and for lunch. But it is a Sunday school instruction, and it follows the Norwalk Public School calendar, and it is taught by volunteers of the gourdwaara.
Thank you.
Attorney Sutchi, many, many religions, in addition to their weekly prayer meetings, also have special holidays. And I'm I'm wondering whether the Sikh religion also recognizes some notable holidays that might not fall on a Sunday or that might attract more members or even more outsiders.
Yes, Mr. Mr. Chairman, that is correct. The Sikh celebrate on April 14th as the day that which is the birth birthday of their religion. So that is the holy day for in the Sikh tradition. There are some minor holidays as well, but that April 14th is the main holiday. And in anticipation of having not only the community celebrate, and it's typically a celebration on a, they'll hold it on a the 14th, but often it's been on the weekend, it's near to the 14th. My client has contacted the Department of Parks and Recreation to rent space at Fox Run School, which is just up the street. And there is a crosswalk across Willow Street so that members of the congregation who need, who cannot park on site can park at Fox Run School. They have also contacted Normal Community College with the same thought in mind so that in the event that there are more parking, that more parking is needed for the April 14th Celebration Day, that they have thought about that and and have that ready to go, so to speak, should it come to pass and be needed.
I'm going to make a couple of suggestions here to the commission. First, because I suspect, and you you've hinted yourself that parking is going to be an issue. Whether it should be an issue is another question, but it will be, it will be raised. I I believe it's probably in your best interest as well as ours that we have our outside traffic consultant review the work that's been done by your traffic consultant. And that's number one. Number two, so that we don't drag this process out with multiple perhaps unnecessary and contentious meetings that we not hold the public hearing until you have all your ducks in a row, all the necessary CAC approvals and other approvals that might be Until you have all your ducks in a row, all the necessary CAC approvals and other approvals that might be necessary. So that we can, we can hear your presentation, hear the comments of. The public and then take what we consider to be appropriate action without. Without having multiple. Drawn out meetings that don't really serve anybody's interest.
Mr. Chairman, may I be heard?
Yes, certainly.
Thank you. And as far as an outside traffic analysis for the purposes of the traffic to be generated by this house of worship. You will hear from our traffic consultants at your next meeting. So it was determined that it would probably be better to have an overview presentation of the facility itself. And the traffic consultants who are on the line listening this evening, they will be ready to present to you. And I believe that is at your October 20th meeting. But as far as having additional peer review, it's my understanding, and this is in discussion after having discussion with Jessica Vannacek of the city. The T M P was created to this, to do the very thing that it's done. And that is review applications for special permits, site plan or the like, and come up with their own recommendations, concerns and questions. That agency has conducted your peer review and they've provided us on August 27th. A memorandum of their comments, questions, concerns and additional information that they sought. We've responded to those and we, I suspect that traffic, transportation, mobility and parking will review the information provided and probably have additional conversations with us. So it would seem to me that yet another peer review for the peer review that's already been undertaken by the city, by the very agency that's charged with doing that, seems to be somewhat. Unnecessary for this, for this applicant and for this project. And furthermore, as far as parking is concerned, that shouldn't even be an issue that is discussed any further. Since the parking that is provided meets and actually exceeds the parking regulations established, codified and. Applied to every other house of worship in the city of Norwalk. So I I would suggest that perhaps we not need yet another study of traffic since your own department charged with that very. Component of an application has already done that and will likely have additional comments for us once it reviews the documents that were submitted to it last week.
Well, a- a- as you know, we we have the authority to do this. We've done it with any number of other projects. And it's my view again. That will not only serve our interests, but serve the temple's interest in 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 the long run as well.
And that is certainly the commission's prerogative, and if that is what your desire is, we would certainly abide by that. But I just wanted to let you know that it's your own, your own peer review consultants in-house have already considered this, but if that is your desire, we understand.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you. Any other comments from the commission?
I have a question for Attorney Sachi. In conjunction with what our chairman just asked, I I read all of the comments as well. And didn't you basically dismiss all of their concerns?
Chair, Commissioner Rowena, we have addressed the concerns, I think, in our presentation and our moving papers. We've also responded to two individuals who are neighbors who shared specific questions and comments with us. And we did respond to those comments in writing with additional information which has been presented this evening. So furthermore, my client. Met with the neighbors as best it could at the time of the submission of the application to introduce themselves and to explain to neighbors what was being proposed. And has offered to make themselves available, should there be additional comments, questions.
Excuse me, Liz, I I didn't mean the neighbors, I was talking about the. I was talking about the, now the, it just went out of my mind, the the city agency, the transit mobility. Authority, I I mean, maybe I misread your comments, but I, you know, I basically thought your answers to their questions were that they weren't relevant.
I'm sorry, Mr. Rowena, if I misunderstood what you were asking, we did respond to T M P's comments and questions. We just not have, we have not yet received back a response to our supplemental submission. I suspect that next week or within a few days, just as it, just as we have not received the final sign offs from the fire department. Or the health department or public works, all of whom have received the revised documents and I suspect may have some additional comments or questions. And then we'll issue final sign offs when we submit responses to those last questions and questions and comments.
No, it's interesting, I I I know that we obviously need to have these introductory hearings, but. It does get confusing when you're listening and trying to decide what you're thinking, what you're going to say. And know that it's not a complete application, so I I totally agree with the comments of our. Chairman that, you know, public hearing ought to be put off until everything is in. And, you know, I also feel at this point that I agree with our chairman about the traffic peer review, but. I'll keep an open mind until your presentation is totally made.
Mr. Mr. Rowena and Mr. Schulman, I just would like to clarify that the application was not deemed incomplete. Everything that was required to be submitted was. What has not happened as yet is that the various city agencies responsible and authorized and charged with reviewing site plans and special permits haven't issued final sign offs. That's not unusual, but every document that was necessary for this application, a plan report. And survey has been submitted, the application is complete, we just have not received the sign offs as yet, but I anticipate those will be coming within the next week to 10 days.
Again, I think that you misinterpret what both of us said. Nobody accused you of an incomplete application. The the fact of the matter is, is that the city agencies haven't answered yet. So from my perspective, what I'm telling you, it's not complete yet, that's all we mean. That's all I mean, I think that's what our chairman means as well.
And again, Mr. Rowena, if I misinterpreted what you were saying, I apologize.
Well, I can't see tonight, Liz, so maybe I can't speak either.
Can I just ask one other thing, this is slightly unrelated, well, it's not unrelated. This graphic that we're looking at right now doesn't appear to be to scale. I I I'm, in terms of just visualizing what the project's going to look like and. You know, what the building is going to be looking like, I mean, we've seen renderings of all different sorts. I'm wondering if we could see a slightly different rendering, an artistic rendering, but something a little that gives us a better indication of what this is going to look like in the community that it's in. You know, I don't know if that's a thing that's possible, but it's just something that's on my mind.
We will look to do that and see what we can come up with that gives you a better idea of how this fits on the land on the street, if if that would give you a better understanding of what it's all about.
I appreciate that, thanks.
I I I have a nitpicking question. The 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 staff has said. That I think it's your backup generator and your gas tanks are not in compliance and you feel they are. I was just wondering what's going on there.
I think for me, that's a matter of semantics, but I think if Chris De Angelis could come on, two of the three or or both of these issues, we can resolve easily.
Okay, that's fine.
Could you just pull up that plan? And respond, please.
Yep, again, for the record, this is Chris De Angelis. Whoa, I lost the page. So this is again, the site plan. The propane tank is located in the northwest corner of the site. Close to the property line, it's fairly small, it's only 500 gallons, it's the size that you would. Typically have for a small residential structure, it would just be used for the, I believe, for the stove, cooking for the stove. We could, again, it's it's it's, I believe the commissions or the staff's position that it's an accessory structure. Although it's a very common item, a lot of houses have them. We could place it below ground, I don't like to place them below ground, they're easier to maintain when they're above ground, but we could. Place it below ground in the same position and then I believe we would be in compliance with your regulations. It would not be considered an accessory structure if it's below ground. So that is what we will, what we will do. The generator. Initially was not going to be part of this application, there was a lot of discussion about it. It's, it would be rather small, it's not, I believe, going to be something that's going to power the whole house. It would just be something small because there are residents, there are priests that in residence that live in this facility. And they would want to have power during a power outage the way any other homeowner would. We put it on there for discussion purposes, it's shown, I'll zoom in a little bit more, the southwest corner, it's shown as dashed. And it's noted as future, so. I think we have made the decision, the applicants made the decision just to remove it from the plan for now. If they decide in the future that they need something sizable that needs an actual pad. They would, of course, have to come back to for approval. It may be possible that they could just. Work with a small, you know, off the shelf type of generator that any homeowner could buy, you know, at a Home Depot. If if they don't need that much power, what what you're seeing here is a pad, which would typically be a larger, you know, whole house generator. And I'm not certain that that's really what they want or or need. So for now, we're going to take it off from the plan and we will revisit it in the future if if Nora desires.
One question I had, and this is just following up on something that staff noted about the drainage in the parking lot. Are you guys considering pervious pavement or anything like that to help with the drainage?
I'd say the answer to that is we consider it on almost every project that we do, it gets built very rarely and.
Yeah.
The reason is, it's not. It's that it does have a small benefit to control runoff and clean runoff. The benefit in relation to the cost and the maintenance is is fairly low, so it's, it's not an easy thing to do or maintain. And the improvements you're getting are 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 moderate. We, we we may consider it, you know, in the back, back here to dress up the area where the. Handicap parking spaces are maybe as an aesthetic thing. Usually we try to limit it to to some sort of area near the building, you know, as you walk near the building, you see these pavers and it looks nice, so. If we were to do, I would suggest that we do it in this area over here. We may do that as an ad alternate, but again, like I said, it's, it's something we talk about, it's kind of like a green roof, it gets talked about a lot, but it gets built very frequently.
Yeah, that's what it seems to be the pattern here.
Yeah, yeah.
Does anyone else have any question, further questions for Marcos or Chris or for me at this stage? Okay, then perhaps we will be back before you on October 20th. When either Neil Alinsky or Dave Sullivan of S L R Consulting will present the traffic information. And hopefully by then we will have some or if not all of the sign offs from CAC in hand and then you can schedule a hearing at that time, hopefully.
Attorney Sachi, I would suggest. That it's not necessary for you to come back on the 20th, but. If you feel it's important for the project for you to come back. Then we'll ask the staff to to schedule it.
I'll work with staff in terms of scheduling and and our consultants and if you see us, you see us, if not, we'll we'll let you know why.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, everyone, for your time.
And Lou, do you want to go, are you comfortable doing peer review or?
Well, I am, but I'd like to hear from the rest of the commission.
I would sort of, I don't know, I'm of the view of, like to see what. The city comes back with as a response to the response, it feels a little bit, I could see where the applicant is coming from of. The city is acting as an essentially a peer review on this and I'm not sure what we're going to get more.
Can I chime in a little bit?
So go ahead, Steve.
Attorney Sachi is correct in some regards, but the T M P isn't, they're not. Traffic engineers necessarily looking at all the data, looking at all the counts, specifically everything that was done. They do some of that, but not necessarily as honed in as the, you know, the consultant may be. And to be perfectly honest, given the sensitivity of this project, I think it's better to be safe than sorry with something like this. It just gives an added level of protection to the city and to the applicant. So I think at the end of the day, if the peer review consultant makes a determination that. You know, the methodology proposed by the applicant and the conclusions reached by the applicant are correct, then. That they'll use their, you know, professional engineering judgment and and state that on the record and that's a safeguard for everyone involved.
I agree, I I agree, it would be beneficial to all parties to have a peer review.
Anyone else want to chime in on this?
Sure. I was thinking about Attorney Succi's argument, but I think that Steve's. I I think what Steve said is correct ultimately, and I don't mind, I mean, I guess in terms of timing. How long does it take to do a study like this, sort of, can you lay out the timetable for us?
Yeah, we we reached out to one company to get a rough timeline of what they think it would take and they gave us about a two to three week timeline for a turnaround.
All right, well, that's not, that's not terrible at all.
Yeah, and just one more point that I forgot to mention is that, you know, T M P is also looking at a lot of different factors that. The peer review is not going to look at, they're looking at the connectivity piece in terms of connecting the the broader. City infrastructure and, you know, the how things relate into transit, so they have a little different function than the sole peer review. So I think the two, and it's not maybe not necessary on every project, but the two complement each other and and provide, like I said, backup and a safeguard.
Okay, are we comfortable then, we'll call in the. Backup traffic, traffic folks?
Yes.
Okay. Fine. Attorney Sachi, thank you again. All right, let's move on, let's move on with the agenda, status report on the industrial zone study. I think Steve has provided that to everyone.
Yeah, and I was just at planning committee presenting that to them and I'm happy to do that at your next agenda, so I mean, there's not too crowded. So everybody, I think, got the link to that a week or so ago. So that's kind of out, we've flagged a couple of little small things already that we'll need to clean up, but maybe the next. Your next meeting, like I said, if the agenda is not too bad, I can walk you through it in a little more detail and then happy to take any questions or comments you have about that.
And the zoning regulation rewrite?
So the consultant is still kind of taking any public comment that comes in. They're kind of working right now on trying to get a draft kind of table of contents and working out on like the draft zoning map. So where they think their first flush will be where things line up. Once they have that finalized a little bit, they're going to, you know, start actually working on the actual code behind all that. They've been going back and forth with me about meeting with you guys and so one of the items we talked about was. Probably needing to do that at a special meeting, but then I said, there is the merger, so should we wait until? After that happens to have that conversation, so that's something that you guys can let me know how you would proceed.
Okay. The redevelopment agencies, Sono T O D study?
I think they've been doing some community outreach on that to try to. Get better feedback from the neighbors and try to, you know, work in how development in that area can. Be more beneficial to the neighbors and not impact the neighbors, I think those conversations have been going pretty well from what I'm told. But I haven't been involved, so I can't say more than that.
Okay, the next item, discussion of merging of the planning commission and the zoning commission, I guess I can report on that. At the council meeting last week. The council voted to merge the two commissions. Probably by January. And what that means to us individually is that all of us. Will be leaving the commission. And the mayor will have to decide who he wants on this new revised commission. So if you're interested in serving on a new revised commission, I'd wait until after the election, but. you should send a letter to the mayor indicating that you'd like to be reappointed to the combined commission. Questions or comments on that? I mean, the the one thing that's clear is there is not space for all of us and all of the members of the Planning Commission on the new commission. New commission is nine members and three alternates. So that's twelve people in total. Now, I know that at least one of the current commissioners does not wish to continue and he as a personal favor, he's agreed to stay on until that merger is effective. I don't know how anybody else feels, although I can tell you that I'm interested in continuing to serve. That's it on that one. And then discussion of East Norwalk TOD regs.
Um, I I got made some progress on a few things, but this week just went completely to you know what? So it's in the same state it was in a few days ago. So I'm I'm going to put it back on your next agenda to discuss further.
Okay.
Steve, my only question on that one is if you can just share, I know you've mentioned this a few times about the conversation around what we can require versus what we can make as a a boat with the amenity structure. Like, and if there's anything like, if you can just point to like, why we can't require those de facto, that'd just be super just enlightening just to understand that. I think you mentioned before it's like state law or something like that, but if you have anything on that, that'd be super helpful.
Yeah, I I don't have it open, but I can email you.
Yeah, 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 no. Oh, you can't recite the statute right now.
Yeah, save it for the for the discussion. I've indicated to Steve that at the meeting in which we hold that discussion, I think I'd like to go over the humanities in some detail, particularly the scoring to see if we think that there are any changes required in that.
I also think we need to take a look at the how the regulations phrase and define what is sustainable. I know this is something that came up at the meeting a couple of weeks ago, but I don't want to lose sight of this one.
Yeah, I think Nick was saying, why can't you? We just always require certain environmental elements in buildings and you know, it's it's it would be good to understand why we can't.
Yeah, I also was thinking about that because the regs in this space don't define certain terms. They can be misinterpreted, maybe misinterpreted or or interpreted in a way that was definitely not the intention of you know, the 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 people involved, us, the Planning Commission and the Common Council. And I want to work with with Steve and court counsel and everyone here to see if we can do something about that before it turns into a potential issue.
Okay. Next item, approval minutes of September second. Can I have a motion on that?
Some moved to.
Okay, Josh moves. Is there a second?
A second.
Galen seconds. Any discussion? All right, if not, all in favor? It's unanimous. Comments of director?
Nothing further right now. Thanks.
Okay, and I have one comment. At this meeting, typically, I appoint members of the commission to a nominating committee. I am going to suggest that we not go through that bother that the officers that we currently have continue to serve given that within four months or so, it's all going to become irrelevant. So unless you feel otherwise, I'll remain in my position. Galen will remain as secretary and Michael will remain as vice chair. Is that acceptable to everybody?
I'd like to hear some acceptance speeches.
No, no. My gift to you, no speech.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, as Liz pointed out, our next meeting is on October twentieth, I believe. And see you all then. See you. Stay healthy.
Everyone.
Get a motion to adjourn.
Yes, thank you. Oh, thank you. It's always good to have a monitor. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Galen moves, Nick seconds. All those in favor, all, everybody's hand went up.
Yep.
Okay.
Have a great evening, everyone.
Bye bye.